Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November 7, 2022 work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have two items on the agenda today, and we have a very nice crowd. Welcome, everybody. It's good to have you here. First, I thought it was a sale someplace, and you misplaced where you were going, but we're glad to have you. I think it's our recording device.
Yes, it is.
If we mute the mic?
No, there's no.
Would that be? Would that help?
It's coming. Turn it off.
It's so real eerie. I was trying that.
It's a good one.
Oh, this one.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to appropriate funds to the fire department, and Chief John Tull will lead us through that one. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good, thank you.
What's before you is an ordinance approving a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the Salisbury Fire Department in the amount of $5,600. This is a reimbursement as we collaborated with the Ocean City Fire Department and OC Jam LLC to provide our bike EMS teams to cover their Ocean City Bike Fest. So this was an agreed-upon cost for us to provide the services. They reimbursed us, and we're asking for the money to go back into our overtime account.
Fine, thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
No.
It's nice that we were able to help out down there, so.
Yes, it was.
Thank the guys and gals. Okay, we have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay. This is Nichols. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Next up, we have a comprehensive plastic bag reduction ordinance, and City Administrator Julia Glanz, Elise Trelligan from the Chair of the Green Team, so please come forward. Elise, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just one second to share my screen. Elise Trelligan is the Chair of the Salisbury Sustainability Advisory Committee, or better known as the Green Team. We are excited to be with you this evening to discuss a new initiative called the Shop Green SBY that will enable our community to be cleaner, healthier, and more sustainable. The Shop Green SBY is a campaign name for our proposed comprehensive plastic bag reduction ordinance, which is a mouthful, which would remove plastic bags from point-of-sale from the city of Salisbury and require businesses to move either to paper bags and highly encourage shoppers to utilize reusable bags. So we're here tonight to explain to you what's in this ordinance, share feedback that we've already heard from numerous community outreach events that we have hosted, and to discuss the rollout of our draft rollout plan as well. So I just want to take a moment to thank Elise for her efforts in leading this initiative along with many members of the Green Team that are with us today, which you can't decipher because everybody's wearing green, which we're really grateful for the strong community support so far. But the Green Team has spent the better part of a year researching about different ordinances that have been passed across the country, speaking to municipal officials, speaking to businesses, and really trying to think through this process that we're here to discuss for you. So why this and why now? Simply, our residents want this, and they're ready for it. The city recently completed a community sustainability survey, and the overwhelming response was in support of this legislation. So the question is, why require businesses to make this shift, and why not a voluntary program? That's a question we've heard a number of times as we've been having conversations in the community. The Green Team's research shows that voluntary programs simply do not work. They continue to have a participation rate of about 5%. So if you were to go to any shop here in Salisbury, small business, big business, and stand outside, you'd see only about 5% of folks bringing their own reusable bags. And I know I personally do it. I have all the good intentions in the world of bringing my own bag, and then I realize, oh, I left it at home, or I left it in the car. I'll just get a plastic bag this one time. And then that cycle keeps going. And so to make real change, we must remove plastic bags just from the cycle entirely. We see all around our city, plastic bags in waterways, in bushes, in gutters. We know they kill over 100,000 marine animals a year, and plastic bags continue to pollute the environment when they are produced. And even more disturbingly, which the Chamber of Commerce folks were very, not excited to hear, but appalled to hear, that plastic bags live on Earth for 1,000 years before they break down.
Hmm.
So, plastic bags are not only an eyesore, but they impede additional recycling efforts. And according to our friends at the Wycomico County, their deputy public works director, plastic bags entering the waste stream is one of the most significant obstacles for our local recycling program here in Salisbury and Wycomico County. So again, we've heard from the community in a number of different opportunities, different facets, and you can see some of the quotes up there that speak to the support of this legislation. The city and the Green Team host monthly cleanups. We have our Secretary of Clean Streets, Craig Founts, but these efforts are still futile. We can't clean our way up from this. We need to address this at the business level. So additionally, some folks have said that since, a quote from one community member, "Since I moved here, I helped Craig Founts clean up streets in various parts of Salisbury many times, and have been appalled and angered by the senseless trash that people throw out of their car windows. Much of that trash is plastic bags." Another said, "I have been using reusable bags for probably 15 years. They're much better for the environment. They hold much more and are stronger, and you know, don't want to see plastic bags flying around in trees and things like that." So I'm going to turn it over to Elise to get into the basics of this.
Yeah, so thanks, everyone. Hopefully, you've checked out the ordinance. I'll just go over some kind of basics of what you'll see in there. So this ordinance really prohibits retailers from providing plastic carryout bags at the point-of-sale. So when you walk into Food Lion, you're not getting a plastic bag anymore. Hopefully, you're bringing your reusable bag. That is the ultimate goal of this. There is a 10-cent required charge for paper bags if customers need them. And the reason for that 10-cent charge is because we are not encouraging people to just go to paper bags, right? We want them to move all the way to reusable bags. Without that 10-cent charge, there really isn't an incentive there. So that's kind of, those are the basics of the ordinance, and you will see some exemptions for like some obvious things, like if you're buying a goldfish, you can still buy that in a plastic bag. So some of those obvious things, but not a lot of exemptions. Overall, they're really practicable ones. We can go on to the next slide. And so we didn't just pull this out of thin air, right? The Green Team, like Julia mentioned, has been doing a lot of research on this for a while, and we didn't want to just, you know, put something together that we thought would be effective, but we wanted to build on success of other jurisdictions. So we actually embarked on an effort to interview seven leaders from other jurisdictions across Maryland. We wanted to keep it local, relate to communities that are similar to ours. And we talked with their folks to better understand kind of four different areas. So we wanted to understand the successes and the challenges that they found around communicating with retailers, communicating with the general public, how to ensure equity and accessibility in this whole process. That's something that we're really keen on. And then how can we leverage community partnerships in order to do this most effectively? And we're so grateful for the time that all these folks spent with us. We actually created a report. I think that it was included in your materials that you received in advance of this. But on the next slide here, I'll kind of, well, first, here's something that we did want to point out, that every single leader described that the bag ban had been received positively, both with retailers and with community members. So these are bills that have happened, they're in place, and they're working. And more importantly, there's no evidence of businesses moving outside of the city or county limits, or people changing their habits of what stores they're going to inside or outside of city limits. This is a really common misconception in this space of plastic bag bans, so we just wanted to kind of alleviate your concerns around that and show that Baltimore City, Chestertown, they haven't seen any issues with that. So on the next slide, these are some of the example lessons that we leveraged and brought into our ordinance and some of the rollout materials that we have. So they said, you know, the fewer exemptions in the ordinance, the better for everybody. That means some of those ordinances that you see around, oh, we're going to allow this thickness of plastic bags, actually creates more confusions, both for retailers and for the consumer. So in the ordinance itself, you'll see that it's a really simple approach to a comprehensive plastic bag ban for single-use plastic bags. Again, that 10-cent key is really important for moving people to reusables. We know that a challenge for businesses is going to be around like stock of paper bags. They do take up more space than a plastic bag does, but again, we're alleviating that by moving people along that continuum. Hopefully, people don't have to have a big stock of paper bags for a while. And then lastly, communication is definitely the most important thing that we heard over and over again in these interviews. So a thoughtful strategy, which I'll share a little bit more with you about in a couple slides here, and a recommendation for a six-month rollout is kind of what was recommended across the board, and that will ensure that smooth implementation. In terms of ensuring an equitable rollout, so of course, we're wanting to produce communication materials developed in multiple languages. We know that our kind of biggest challenge is going to be with convenience stores. So again, this is really important, multiple languages, making sure that the owners of these stores understand what is kind of at stakes. And then we're going to be partnering with trusted community organizations, so our libraries, our food banks, our community centers, to get bags to those who need them most. We have some really cool ideas about how to do a get-the-bag-out campaign in partnership with a lot of our local community-based organizations. And lastly, we want to leverage the outreach strategies. We know that the library, junior achievement, the universities, the schools, they all have their outreach materials. They have pens that they give away. They have papers and pads and all that sort of stuff. Reusable bags should be part of that strategy, and we can work with them to get as many bags out as possible over the next six months. And all of this is possible. We know this because states have done this themselves. Right over the border in Delaware, we've seen this be successful. Baltimore City, this is possible. This isn't something new. And ultimately, this is something that the state of Maryland is going to pass. It's just going to take a little bit longer, and we want Salisbury to be out and ahead and really be demonstrating that sustainability commitment right here in our own city. So in terms of business buy-in, you know, we have that six-month rollout, but we've already started the process. We've had conversations with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Greater Salisbury Commission, and we've hosted a number of conversations with these folks. I think it was Bill Chambers who said nine out of 10 businesses already support this. They know this is the right move. We're listening to the concerns, and we're willing to, the Green Team and the city is willing to do what's needed once this actually does come to fruition, to support businesses if there are challenges and hiccups. That 10-cent fee will offset the cost for bags for businesses, and it's also a great opportunity for advertising. They can put their logo, they can sell their own bags in their stores. We already see folks who do this and are successful with that. And so to set Salisbury up for success, like I said, we've done that kind of six-month rollout process. We think that's going to be really helpful to allow folks to draw down on their existing stock. But something that I'm really excited about is that we've developed a really strategic plan for both communication and community engagement. We know it can't just be one. It has to be both these things working in tandem. And so I think it's a 25, 30-page document that you'll see that is a good start and a strategy that I think will continue to be built upon, and I hope that all of you will help to inform that as well. We're definitely open to your thoughts. We want to know how folks in your jurisdictions will be most able to connect with this ordinance. So thank you.
Yeah, and then finally, you know, as Elise mentioned, taking that six months to really educate folks, allow businesses to draw down their stock, and to have clear communications with clearer branding and things like that. There's a sample in here of what some of that can look like, just a first draft. But we're going to be, you know, taking our time to really chat with folks and make sure they understand what's coming. This would have an implementation date of July 1, 2023, which, if this moves quickly, could be a little bit more than six months, actually. And I was remiss earlier when I didn't thank Alyssa Hastings, who has since moved on from the city of Salisbury, but was a major player in ensuring this was moving forward. So we're happy to take questions.
Questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
The only thing I really have concern about is forcing businesses to charge people 10 cents for a bag. I know some businesses already use paper bags, like Coons. You know, I think it should be optional if a business wants to charge the 10 cents, or if they want to eat the 10 cents, especially someone like Coons or other gift stores that, you know, already have branded stuff that's a part of their, it's a part of their marketing. I don't know if that's something to look at as well, just to think about.
I will just say that it is really important, and you know, we think about equity oftentimes in terms of like the consumer, but there's equity in the business space as well. So if one business is able to offset that cost, that doesn't mean that a small business is necessarily going to be able to do that. So I think the 10-cent fee is really important to make sure that everybody is on that level playing field. And as we demonstrated earlier, the fee is really important for moving people towards the, ultimately, that reusable bag.
People?
So would it be for every bag that you get, it's a 10-cent fee?
And I think I'd like to point out, too, that, I mean, there are already stores that people go to, without question, Sam's Club. You end up with a laundry detergent box to put your groceries in, or.
Aldi.
Aldi. I know that doesn't discourage me from going to Aldi. Those are the two stores I shop at the most, as a matter of fact. So I don't think this is going to be as big of a switch as people might think it is. We already see this in shops now.
Yeah, and you go to Save-A-Lot, and they charge you for bags, too. They sure charge you for plastic bags, so I couldn't see anything different than having the paper bags or us carrying, because like, I'm like Julia, I have a million of those reusable bags, and every time I go to a store, I'm like.
Thank goodness for MML.
Yes.
Maryland Municipal League has bags.
Every time you buy rum from Lion's Rum, they give you a bag.
Yes, right.
I gotta.
Angela?
All of the paper bags.
Comments?
You can bring those. Those count as research.
Well, I would dare not admit that I'd go out of my home or go into a store without my reusable bag. I would not. Not this, not this.
I am. I'm gonna be honest. I forget about every time.
Not this room, not tonight. Tonight is not the night. But I certainly support this 100 million percent, all the way around. Good work and good research. Thank you very much.
Personally, I have eight reusable bags in my car, and my wife has eight reusable bags in her car. And we take them back and forth, actually, to New Hampshire, to our summer home, and we use them up there, too. And just as a sidebar, I talked to Mr. Boda before the meeting, and I said, driving here today between College Avenue and Carroll Street on Eastern Shore Drive, I saw four plastic bags tied up in the bushes that obviously blew there somehow. So I think this is a great move. It's long overdue. I don't think we're going to have as big an issue. But I think two things. One, I'd like to see the strategy book. And two, the key to anything, especially in this city, is marketing. If you don't market the concept, it's going to fail. So that's got to be one of the most significant things that we do. But I totally agree with it, and it sounds like we have consensus here. Do we have consensus?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move it forward to our council meeting, and we'll take it from there. Mrs. Nichols?
Thank you.
Hey, Dad, I really think they bullied us for real with all this green.
No. Did anybody?
It's like voter intimidation.
Did anybody tell you about the dollar charge for the seat?
I have my own toes.
We also have, before we leave, we also have two requests to speak. And I would ask that, I know what it's about, so you'll have four minutes to speak your mind, each person. If you're saying the same, if you're going to be saying the exact same thing or the previous person has said it, just say, "I totally agree." And I know that everybody else, everybody else in this room that agrees, raise your hand. Some people didn't raise their hand, and they're wearing green shirts. Okay.
Well, we haven't heard it yet.
Linda Bistrack, is that, am I pronouncing that right or wrong?
I just wanted to say that Chestertown.
Now, could you go up to the?
Linda Bistrack, I live in Salisbury, and I'm a kayaker on the river every two or three weeks, picking up trash, especially plastic bags. Anyway, in Chestertown, they did pass a plastic bag ordinance, and I know that Easton is considering one also the same month, this month. So we're looking at three major cities on the eastern shore, on big rivers, looking at this plastic bag ban, and I thank you so much for considering it.
And we also have Cindy Dillon.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. I didn't know I was going to get to speak, but I just wanted to say that we strongly support this. And another idea that you might want to consider, if you have your plastic, I mean, your reusable bags in your car and you forget them, just wheel your cart out to your car and put the groceries right in your car. No big deal. You don't have to have a bag. The other thing I just wanted to share is that the Sierra Club, the local Sierra Club, did a shopper's survey, and I think you have access to that, Elise, I'm not positive, but I think you have access to it. It is a really good way to see how the stores such as Shop Right, I'm sorry, Save-A-Lot and Aldi's, that do not allow giving out of the plastic bags, but instead, charge for bags. They generally have lower prices, so you're already saving some money that way, whereas the stores such as Acme and Food Lion, where they say you're getting free plastic bags, you're not getting free plastic bags, you're paying for them anyway. It's just in the cost of the groceries. So the survey that we did is of 17 stores, and it does give you a lot of information so that you can compare how the stores that don't have these quote-unquote "free" plastic bags are really more, they're more expensive, and the model that Aldi's has and that Save-A-Lot has is what we're talking about here, and I think overall, the consumers will be very happy with that. Thanks for letting me speak.
You're welcome. We will now have remarks from the administration first. Mr. Mayor?
Well, good evening, Council. Good evening, members of the public. A couple of things. One, I wanted to let you all know that tomorrow, 12 to 4, we have painting. We're looking for volunteers. We'll be painting the second coat at Ann Street, so mark your calendars if you're available. We're getting closer. The great challenge remains on providing an 800-amp switch and the associated transformers to operationalize the site, so the electric supply chain issues that exist remain a challenge. So also, if you know somebody who's got an 800-amp switch, or you know where one is, and it's easy to get to, and we can steal it, I didn't say that on the record. Let us know. Yeah. On tonight's decision, I want to add that Easton's will go into effect April 2023, the town of Easton, so you know, if we can get there even faster than them, it's better. You know, I like to be first. And then I just want to add, Mr. President, to what you said about marketing and how important that is. We've got to explain the purpose and the reason behind things to our public, so that's really important. And you're right, that we've got to do that in Salisbury, and I wish that was all we had to do, and I wish that was, you know, the end of it in public education, but sometimes gentleness is not enough. And so I just want to applaud you for what you did here tonight. You know, sometimes you have to adopt the rules and regulations that we know will change behavior, and you did that tonight. You were brave enough to make a decisive change, so I want to say thank you and congratulations. I want to applaud you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Glanz, even though you're president, do you have anything to add?
Appreciate the support.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Um, no, not much, just tomorrow's election day, so we don't tell you who to vote for, just use common sense, but please make sure you vote.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No, I really don't have anything to say, but I tell you what, this green is really rocking in here. They got all shades, and I'm just looking, I'm amazed at, and I'm, you know, the support here for this initiative is great. And I'm proud and I'm glad that you all have come together to do this, because on most parts, we don't see this kind of support for a lot of things, so it's great to see this support. I thank you and continue to do what you do.
Ms. Blake?
The green does look nice. It does look nice, I do like it. A couple, small little announcements, as always. If you're fortunate enough to be healthy enough, please donate blood. Especially on the eastern shore, we continue to run very, very low. It's very dangerous. So please donate blood. The second thing is Friday, the 11th, is Veterans Day. Please thank a veteran. My father's a veteran. He served in the Navy. He was right there, front and center, at the Cuban Missile Crisis, and he always was very proud to pick up, I believe it was Dwight and McDivitt, the astronauts who re-entered Earth. He was on that ship that picked them up, and that was always very exciting to hear him retell that. But just always thank a vet, because you know, we wouldn't be here in this democratic process if it wasn't for our veterans fighting for our democracy and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Just want to say, as a council member on the Green Team, I'm so glad it's finally coming here. We've been talking about this for a long time. I want to shout out Alyssa again. We miss you so much already, but you know, this is fantastic. I'm really glad to see it. I promise I was wearing green earlier, but I spilled something on my shirt, so. Oh, well.
Thank you, Michelle. Just a couple of things. First, tomorrow is a very, 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 very important election. Please go and vote. We're not going to tell you who to vote for, but please go and vote. Okay?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mostly not.
Andy made a really good point. We referenced that Alyssa is no longer with us. She has moved on to.
That's my next point.
Okay.
Great minds.
Stole my thunder, yes. Okay, I won't hold that against you for more than an hour. Yes, so tomorrow, please go out and vote. Next, I'd like to, well, this hurts a little, but I'd like to introduce Senator Van Hollen's Eastern Shore Coordinator, Alyssa Hastings, in the back. We are certainly sorry to see her leave us, but now we have a straight line to the senator for all environmental issues. So thank you, Alyssa, for being here, and thanks for all you've done for the city. Next, as I always do, I'll second the notion about needing blood. Our blood supply is critical and has been critical since, yeah, since COVID, really, and it's not getting any better, so we need help there. Again, remember your veterans. And it's not getting any better. So we need help there. Again, remember your veterans. My dad was a veteran and fought in Europe in World War II. And I had a thought when we came through this, and I know this is being, you're all here now, but it will be viewed on PAC 14 and hopefully by a lot of people. If there are any manufacturing plants that have an 800-amp breaker, please let us know, because the holdup on the homes, the tiny homes, is an 800-amp breaker. And everybody's heard how hard it is to get things from suppliers. This is one of those things. So if anybody knows anybody in a manufacturing plant, or do we contact the school system?
Certainly. Delmarva Power has contacted everyone and says they don't exist. But, I mean, they do exist, but they're all spoken for and not able to. So the answer to your question is, we don't know.
If you, just ask. If you know anybody, ask. It doesn't hurt to have somebody say no twice. So go, because this is critical. And that's about it for me. I want to again thank everyone for coming. It's not often that we see standing room only in our council chambers. I wish, and you are welcome to come to any council meeting, and I hope that you come for the council meetings. The first reading will be...
This week.
Next week?
This week.
First reading will be next week. It takes two readings to get it passed.
And your green shirts.
And I'll try to remember to wear my green. So thank you very much, everybody. We are adjourned.
Thank you.